Call the Lord please.
Roll call for July twenty-third, regular meeting. Councilmember Ralph, councilmember Gums.
Present.
Councilmember Willis.
Present.
Councilmember Gilliard.
Present.
President, councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Lee, councilmember Baker, also President Mayor Edwards, the city attorney, and Mayor Walker, and the city manager, you all.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time we will have invitations thought about the case.
Agreed with everyone to our mayor, city council, city manager assistant, city manager to all those present. It gives me great pleasure to introduce our chaplain of the day, which is none other than Pastor Barbara McKee, the anointed pastor of the True Buying Faith International Churches of College Park and Atkinson. She lives in District Six, and our chaplain of the day is a strong supporter, not only of her councilman, but all of the city of South Fulton. Those of you that are able to stand if you don't mind standing with us, and let us say amen as Pastor comes.
Amen, you may be seated. Well, I just want to thank the pastor Henry today, the chaplain of this great city. To our council and citizens of the city of South Fulton, I come with great, I'm not praying yet, I come with gratefulness this evening to say, thank you for giving me, Chaplain Henry, the opportunity to be the first female chaplain of our new city of South Fulton. I'm just overjoyed, because I am making history today, and I don't take that lightly. Because over the years, I'm not praying this yet, I got just a little bit more. Over the years, the pledge of allegiance has been written over five times. So, as that changed, I realized God changes not. So, as we pray, we go and ask our Father, as we gather to make decisions in our community, may we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits, and of course, the pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us. Give us the will to act in accordance with your word, what is best for our community. And Lord, we pray a special prayer over our council and mayor.
Yes, yes.
Lord, their jobs are not easy.
Say your prayer.
And we ask that you just give them the strength
Yeah.
to endure of what we're in today.
Thank you.
Lord, it's not like it was ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. We ask for a special guidance and cover them each and every time they are. And these are the blessings we ask in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda would be the adoption of the agendas, and before you got to make the motion, item number four is being pulled and re-scheduled for August the first and August eighth.
That's military.
Item number four, council first public hearing for the 2019 military. Are there any? Are there any other items?
On the consent agenda I want to pull, the moratorium banning uses.
And what do you want it?
I wanted for the, um...
Item number twenty-one. As the first item on the agenda, due to agenda items. Okay, any other changes?
Any other changes, okay.
Yes.
Okay, no.
Okay, so you need a motion to approve the council agenda with moving item number four off of the agenda, moving item number fifteen to the first item under agenda items.
I'm going to take a motion.
Wait, wait, hold on.
Wait a minute now.
You know, I'm not working. The work session item is on the consent agenda.
Yes, we had discussion.
We had discussion.
Yeah, so, but it's on the consent agenda. Okay, well, yes, I would like to make the motion to remove that item off the
Okay.
Which item?
Seventy-eight thousand.
Number sixteen, okay, so the motion is
General, this is where we had got some conversation. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I didn't hear his green like that.
I didn't see it. The item, the motion needs to make that item number four be removed from the agenda. Item number fourteen and sixteen be moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
Yes.
Item four to the regular agenda.
Item four be removed from the council agenda period.
Fourteen and sixteen.
Fourteen and sixteen move to council consent agenda to the regular agenda.
I'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
The property moved to second, in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor. That passage unanimous, unanimous.
Next item on agenda is approved July ninth, council meeting minutes.
I'll accept the motion.
I make a motion that we approve the July, the ninth, council meeting minutes.
I'll remove the second, in discussion, hearing none, all those in favor. That passage unanimous, unanimous.
Next is to approve the July fifteenth special call meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the special call meeting minutes for July fifteen, two thousand and nineteen.
Second. I'll remove the second, in discussion, hearing none, all those in favor. That passage unanimous, unanimous.
Adoption of the July seventeenth special call meeting.
I make a motion to approve the special call meeting minutes for July seventeen, two thousand and nineteen.
Second. Property moved to second, in discussion, hearing none, all those in favor. That passage unanimous, unanimous.
First item on agenda is council approval of alcohol license for Craft Hot Lounge Public Hearing Police Department.
Good evening. Council, we have before you the applicant for Craft Hot Lounge Restaurant. They're seeking an alcohol license for consumption on premises of malt beverages, wine, distilled spirits at fifty-four ninety-five O National Highway. All applicable fees have been paid, and all inspections have been passed. The police department's recommendation is approved.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
You need to open the public hearing.
I'm sorry, did I not do it?
No.
Well, let me open the public hearing.
Okay.
Anyone who wants to speak for or against this, please come up. Nobody wants to speak for or against it? I'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Property moved, property moved to second, all those in discussion?
In discussion.
All those in favor? All those in favor? That passage unanimous.
Next item is approval of M eighteen dash zero zero six for a modification of Z zero zero dash zero one oh two at Bryant Creek, formerly known as Legend Oaks Phase Two Public Hearing Planning and Zoning.
Good evening, Mayor Council. The item before you is a request that you've heard a number of times. As referenced, on February twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, the item was deferred for sixty days. April twenty-third, we move to the agenda, May twenty-eighth, deferred for sixty additional days, which brings us to today. The applicant has sent yet another request today to ask for a deferral. So, you are at a point where you can make a motion to approve the deferral, or you can ask for me to continue with the case we heard still.
I will open the public hearing.
Okay.
I'm going to open the public hearing, all those who are for zoning to my left, all who are against to my right.
What if it's not for?
Push it to your left, so.
Okay, sir.
Against to my right, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Harold Buckley, twenty-eight forty-nine Paces Ferry Road in Atlanta. I am here before you on behalf of the applicant, Polte, who is requesting a thirty-day deferral of this application. Since the last time we appeared before you, we have actually been successful in addressing concerns that were raised about this proposal from the Legend Oaks subdivision. At this point in time, however, we do have a few outstanding concerns that have been raised by people from outside of the Legend Oaks subdivision, and so we are asking for an additional thirty days to allow time for us to continue to work with that. Do you agree?
Yes. I'm Ron Few, I'm a member of Legend Oaks community. I live at two forty-seven Lockswood Lane. We have been in negotiations in our community. Some delays are probably on our part, some delays probably on Polte's part. But we have come with an agreement for our community, but we want to be good neighbors as well. And so, we are asking that you grant the thirty days so that we can allow any issues to be taken care of, even outside of our community. We looking forward to it because it's been like twelve years and they are still our HOA. They holding the deferral, and we just feel like at this point now, we can go on ourselves and we can do a better job. No, pardon, kidding on that. We live in one of the most safest communities in their twelve-year history. We have never had a break-in. One of the strongest HOAs you can have, I guess if you live in the community, you're gonna know the HOA knowing because they're gonna write you up sometime or another. I left my water hose out all night, so I got written up for that. But, let me just say this, we're in agreement, and we're just waiting now to get a signed agreement from Polte, and our concerns in Legend Oaks have been met. But, we want to be a good neighbor, so we want to make sure that all the concerns surrounding our community, people get to have a chance to do that.
Anybody else speak for him? Or no, seven figures, kind of have that. Are those who are against?
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Deanna Risperst, I live at sixty seventy-five Buttoner Road. I am one of the neighbors that they refer to as outside the gates, or outside of Legend Oaks. So, I not only represent, I think my, I know for a fact I represent not only myself, but I represent the three homes that are immediately east of the project. So, I am the adjoining property that is immediately east of where Bryant Creek will ultimately hope to break ground. But outside of that, I think Ron, I have to kind of speak to what he just said in the sense of, they have come to an agreement. Their agreement that they've come to specifically speaks to the concerns of Legend Oaks. While I tend to think that the concerns that I have speak not only to myself, but to the broader Clifton Dell community who use and travel up and down Buttoner Road. I'll kind of lay these concerns out just very quickly. We have some concerns as it relates to traffic. We have expressed these concerns in Polte, as it relates to the number of vehicles and the amount of congestion that we already have in that area. And we kind of, we would like to know what the traffic study says about the impact as a result of that. When you look at the site plan, there's some questions about, there are no site distances listed. Therefore, we have some questions about the safety of the driveway, of where it's going to ultimately come out. There's a curve when you come around there, and there's a curve when you're coming, as you are heading, I guess you would call that west on Buttoner. And so, we question the safety of people being able to travel in and out of that community, and the people who are traveling up and down Buttoner as a result to them having a chance to actually come out. During our initial meeting with Polte back in January, they indicated that they would perform a traffic study. To date, we have not seen that traffic study, and so, we'll continue to ask for a traffic impact study. But now, we also ask for a, we're asking for a site distance study as well. There's also a request for a stream buffer variance. There are definitely some concerns about that, and we've expressed that to them as it relates to the placement of retention ponds and where they are located. Both retention ponds are placed on the side where residences are, and not on the side of the property where there's, there's no, there's nothing there. And some of the land has been acquired by Georgia DOT, and therefore, will not have impact. We all know retention ponds where snakes, and all other kind of things. And heaven forbid if it fails, then we have some other concerns as well, as it relates to erosion. Not only that, one of the concerns about just in general about the stream buffer variance is simply that, we don't think that's good precedent for this young city to start setting. There's a reason that it was set EPD, to comply with EPD standards when the county said it. Commissioner, you were not a commissioner, you were commissioned to manage this, man. But we think that those standards ultimately should remain in place. And once we open that door, we believe that many will come behind us. I'm also going to address, as it relates to that buffer, that stream buffer request, there is some concern about the trespass potentially being created on the northwest side of the property, that would actually back up onto Inon churches, between Inon churches and what the Georgia TLT side of the property is. And, and so, we're asking that planning department really take a look at that and ensure that it's not. There's also some question about the hydrology study that was provided. We've asked really for the parameters to be provided to us so we can understand exactly what they put into the proposal. And I will say, Mr. Buckley has offered to have a conference call with us in regards to that. I explained to him, we were in the middle of dealing with, we had originally had a consultant to advise us on it. We've learned that there was a conflict of interest, and therefore, we could not move forward with getting on that call. I did not feel personally comfortable, nor did my neighbors about jumping on a call with an engineer to discuss the rate and volume of water all coming on and off of property, and so, that's been one of the holdups. But, the last thing I think I have here is that we are, and this is from me and the three, my three compadres right next to me. I think one of our concerns is, is part of the recommendation that the staff, planning staff has given, is that there's a fifty-foot undisturbed buffer granting to the north side of the property, which is in between Legends and the new, what would be the new subdivision. Back in twenty twelve, there was a modification under the county in which, so current, the current ordinance requires there be a fifty-foot buffer in between a subdivision and a property that's zoned as agriculture. The three properties immediately to the east are considered agriculture. During that modification, there was a reduction in fifty-foot buff, undisturbed buffer down to twenty feet. So, we are asking, and we have asked, that that fifty-foot buffer be restored, and that that, the east side of the property where residences currently are is treated the exact same as the property to the north. Whether it's the fencing and the buffer, we would like to be considered the exact same. These are kind of really the concerns for me and for our community as a whole.
Here we have five minutes left, or against that, and what else?
Yeah, I would like to speak. So, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Angela James, and I actually live across the street from Legend Oaks, in Regency Oaks subdivision. My address is thirty-three oh five Arthur Run Place, and I'm asking you all to deny this variance. First point I have to say is that we are tired of these substandard builders coming in our pristine community and building low-quality projects that are making hu, they're making huge profits, as we know, and leaving our neighborhoods and neighbors holding the bag. These projects are bringing down our home values, and frankly, these new homes are not built well, in my opinion. I hear several instances where people are complaining about wear and tear when they've only been in these houses a couple of years. They're brand-new built, roofs are falling apart, all types of plumbing issues, and poor quality materials are being used, and we know that. Secondly, I just want to make sure everybody understands that I attended the meeting on January twenty-third at five p.m. with Polte Hanks and the Legend Oaks teams at the Wood Creek Library. And I learned about this, of course, on Next Door. And the first big question I would have to the lawyer, and to Polte, and to everybody, how do you have a public meeting at five o'clock on a weekday knowing that most people that live in this community have to get home in all this crazy Atlanta traffic? And what we know for sure is that this discouraged a lot of the community from attending and voicing their concerns. Nothing, nothing, in my opinion, was positive about the whole meeting in general. The representatives that Polte sent could not even answer the basic questions properly. Those questions being what are the traffic studies, the infrastructure, pricing, overall quality, and environmental concerns that we have? Also, what would the builder offices offer us in return? Clean green space parks, anything for a better quality of life for our community? These meetings, hearings that are held for the public are basically a smokescreen, as far as I'm concerned. And from this point on, I understand what we're dealing with. We're dealing with builders, developers, contractors coming in here and completely disregarding this predominantly African-American community, African-American community. And basically knowing they're building these lousy houses. And let's be really clear and transparent that they would not dare take these type of projects to any northern community. Thank you again for your time, and again, please deny this request. And I feel like South Fulton deserves a whole lot better.
Just something else, I want to close up this new city of South Fulton, I want to say congratulations. But you know, my concerns are raised, least of those, and my love is for the woman. And Mr. Edwards, if you recall, a hundred and twenty thousand people had been said, make up your city. A hundred, about ninety percent of them looked like me and you. I just been listening, I talked to sister earlier.
Oh, oh, wait a minute, this about, this about the zone?
This is about what my two ladies just spoke about. I just made my mind up a moment ago. My sister told me when I walked in, she had some issues she was going to talk about. But when I heard what she was saying, it let me think about Mr. Benjamin Watkins, you know Benjamin? It's sad that you would start a city, a new city, because Atlanta want to be fair with the peoples in your, in Georgia city. And they said they want to speak out, they spoke where? Spoke for years, I think it was, about ten years, to create a new city and leave Atlanta. And I was saddened to see you all leave Atlanta. But why? If we're going to continue to do the same thing that we were doing with the project when they come and they issue long to the city council in Atlanta, and you got these women that's coming up here two years later, less than two years y'all been here, and they saying we're starting out with the same will and not want to be conscious of what they believe is unfair. And you numbers of this, oh, need to listen, need to listen. I heard the brother talk about his home owner association. Now, I'm not going to plead with everything across County Creek. The way y'all have showed us, fourth and County, putting money all the time with those that have, and the have more. That's why I'm down here today. But I'm saying based on what I heard, I think it's fair to have a new city and your constituents are speaking for just and fairness, speak up. Send a phone, this, from Mr. Edwards, other members, Mayan Hotel.
All right, you have the opportunity to do it now. He has the opportunity to come in. You have about, how many minutes do you have? Can we be on the rebuttal? I can be. Rebuttal, seven, seven minutes, thirty seconds, seven devoted rebuttal, go ahead. I can be clear and concise with thirty-two seconds. Infrastructure for our city, the things that you all are proposing, approving on both ends of button is going to impact us for years to come. Right now, we don't have the infrastructure in place to support some of the things that are being proposed. Traffic, our schools, they're going to be impacted greatly by the decisions that you all made. We as a city haven't had what we needed to develop and put in place the infrastructure to support some of the things that you're proposing right now. Traffic, roundabouts, my wife works at Clifton Dell Elementary, just that traffic alone. Thank you, I got you. Is that all time now for the rebuttal?
Not rebuttal.
Rebuttal. Go ahead, you want a rebuttal?
Yes, just very quickly, I wanted to make one clarification with regard to what this application is asking for. This application does not include an actual request for any variances. What we're asking for is an amendment to the zoning conditions that would allow us to come back and submit an application for stream buffer variance. Right now, the way the conditions are written, while we would generally be able to apply for a stream buffer variance, the zoning conditions right now don't allow us to submit that application. So, we're just asking for the opportunity to file for a variance. So, approving this application would not automatically approve any variances. Also, with regard to the question about quality, that's one of the fundamental elements of our agreement with the Legend Oaks subdivision, which has gotten down to the level of detail as to calling out specific floor plans that Polte builds in other communities and saying that these are the floor plans that we will offer here. So, the quality that we are, we will be offering here will be commensurate with what we offer in other parts of town. So, again, we would ask you for a little bit of additional time. I mean, we've come a mighty long way since we last came before you and asked for a deferral. And I do believe that with a little more time, we could reach a consensus on this application.
Okay. Anything else for the rebuttal?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm a pro of the public hearing, it's done.
So, thank you, and I have been receiving a lot of emails and phone calls in relation to this particular property. And I do understand that you and Legend Oaks have come to some type of agreement. I have not seen the agreement, but also too, it is more people surrounding them and just... So, I want to make sure that all of us' voices are heard. I can respectfully grant the thirty-day deferment, but I do have some conditions that I want you to look at in the process. So, if you have completed a site distance study, I would like to see that. Also too, I know in a previous email that I said it was a traffic study. I realize going back and looking at the minutes that we did not formally ask for a traffic study, but I would like to see a traffic study, because actually, I attempted to come out of that little street that is being formed, and it just wasn't safe, so that was one of my biggest concerns. Also too, the fifty-wide buffer, I think you already put that on your list along East Avenue. And I can send this to you in an email. I would also like to see the parameters as well for the hydrology study that you all used to come up with the findings. And then also too, here are some of the things. I know that you walked through the steps with the advisory board of Legend Oaks, but I would like to see three to five home size that you all would be offering in that area. Also too, I'm asking that the home shall be three-sided brick. The remaining rear shall be brick, stucco, stone, or other masonry materials, clapboard, cedar shanks or shingles, or some combination of the materials. Vinyl or aluminum can be prohibited. Also too, I want to make sure that the foundations are not exposed. If you are going to be doing any type of retaining walls, I want to make sure that the retaining walls are constructed of stone, brick, or any type of decorative concrete module. Also too, I would like you to get involved with the city arborists in regards to the trees, the frontage, because what I'm noticing in a lot of these properties is that this big old tree is placed in front of our properties, and it's taking away from the, I guess, the sun, the light, and the grass trying to and it's taking away from the, I guess, the sun, the light, and the grass trying to brown. So we need to either figure out exactly what tree is the right tree to go in there, but I would like you to work with the city arborists in regards to that. Lastly, these are some things that I will work with the planning, the planning team about. But also too, I would suggest that if possible, that we can set up another community meeting, if you have time, with the entire community, not just Legend's Oaks. I know that was, you can kind of work and see if we can get more community involvement in regards to that. So those are my requests in regards to this difference.
Yes, good. Staff, push that. This is the very control, and council, you may want to chime in on this. Where's our rule?
So researching that, the rule is that after the second one, it just means that there has to be a quorum that allows for the deferral to move forward. So there's not a limit on the deferral, it just means that a quorum must take place in order for the review of the parole.
Okay. All right.
So I'd like to make a motion that we defer this for thirty days to the next council meeting, which is, Ms. Reed?
It's the second, it's the second, I don't put it, it's the second Tuesday in August, and so that would be...
August twenty...
August, no, the second Tuesday, August, August, uh...
August twenty-seventh. August twenty-seventh, two thousand.
Okay, well that's on...
All right, probably move the second in discussion. Oh, hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is request for approval of M nineteen dash zero zero four, modification request of two thousand, two thousand Z dash zero one oh three at fifty-seven thirty-seven O National Highway.
That.
Public hearing.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, there's some issues, I'm sorry. Okay, the item before you is for a modification request at property located at fifty-seven thirty-seven O National Highway. Shown here, you'll see where the property is located at fifty-seven thirty-seven, illustrated here. It's immediately adjacent to other C one, C two, and it has an industrial piece of property as well that is bordering. The property is exactly one point four nine acres. The retail property is eight thousand six hundred and thirty-nine square feet of retail. There's a number of suites located here, this property is not the, or this business is not the only business that would be there. So the property is currently on C one. The comprehensive plan does not go against this request. The restriction that would have been allowed in the two thousand case that you're seeing here was the number of users that are prohibited. The purpose for tonight is to modify this list. They're asking for you to consider removal of the massage parlors as shown on the screen. I need to also identify where there was an error on staff's part. Staff received the license sometime back and approved the business that had the license. We have since denied to re, to re, I guess I approved their business license. So this item is on hold until this decision denied. So there is not a current license for this business at this time.
Where's your staff recommendation?
At this time, staff is recommending approval for it to allow for only one massage parlor at this location.
Okay, I'll open up the public again. All those in favor? Those who oppose?
Michael, Renova District says, if you will look at that list again, if you could bring it back up, there was only fourteen of fifteen different users there. These were done on purpose because these were things that have degraded our community. Hope I don't go into that his head again. This has nothing to do with the applicant. You know what this does? You approve this and this bill, this business fails to succeed, I would get the crew from Blue Flame or Magic City to come in and open up a massage parlor, and there's nothing you can do. It doesn't have to go back in front of you again or anything. The only way it gets caught, if our police just happen to be good enough to come back and fix it up. This is improper for this community. This makes a mockery of all of these different prohibitions that we talk about in these ordinances. It makes a mockery of this zoning rewrite. This is not appropriate for this community. It was done like this several times. Mr. Mayor, you were even there back when your commissioner, when this property wanted to do something in there, and we have to deny that. I am urging you to deny this, this is not proper. It's already listed. I can't understand if somebody made this mistake, that's not this community's problem. And if she needs to take it that far, I see four attorneys sitting here right now to go ahead and get, you know, your, your, your lost wages or your compensation for not having it in there.
Thank you. Any else, again, anyone else, again? Are you for, ma'am, or you not?
I am. Good evening. My name is Misha Mack Shublin, owner of One Touch Healing Hands Day Spa located at fifty-seven thirty-seven O National Highway Suite Two Hundred. I've been a massage therapist for fourteen and a half years. Never have I had any complaints, any problems. Certified license and provide diligent care to my clients. Okay, we practice health and wellness. We are not a massage parlor, we are a day spa, healing and wellness, there is a difference. We offer ear counting, not only massages, we do ear counting, body scrubs, choco facials, and more. We service local government officials, teachers, and schools in the area. Clients continue to return for the One Touch experience. You may feel free to go on my website, onetouchhealinghands.com to review the, the visitor reviews and the extra other services that we offer. Also on Bupan, you may go on there and review my customer feedback and see all of the outstanding reviews that are listed. We greatly appreciate if we may remain at the current location to service the South Fulton area. I also brought some gift bags for those that they want one with some samples or some scrubs that I make.
Okay.
And, yeah, thank you, Mr. Edwards. I've been doing this for a while, and you know that, right?
Any, anybody for, anybody else for? I don't know if I can get that. That wasn't too good. Okay, that was pretty good. You got no man tonight. Anybody else for or against? Hearing none, I'm opposed, public hearing, Ms. Jackson?
I would, I wrote this property today, but I had, I went to this very... One of your planners.
Yes.
And spoke with him because I had got several calls from the merchants on O National Highway. So I would like to hold this. We're having news on Better Tech for District Five. And I would like to hold this until we have an opportunity to discuss what the surrounding community would like to see as... O National does not, a lot of the merchants there. So right now, I'm going to leave it up to our district, but I would, I'm going to hold this till...
Okay, Ms. Reed?
First of all, I want to be clear, I'm going to do whatever Roger Jackson wants to do, this is Roger Jackson's district. But I do have a question about massage parlors. So a, a, a day spa like this for massage envy, that's different than like Blue Flame. Are they both in the same category?
They're both within Blue Flame, or are you speaking, I'm just trying to understand, I'm sorry.
I think, I think, when, when people hear, when, when people hear massage parlor, and when people hear day spa...
Right, those are two, okay, so massage parlor is exactly that, you're actually applying a massage to someone. A day spa, you can have where their little lady is receiving the facials, they may have some type of aromatherapy going on, it could be two different things. However, because she is in fact applying or having a massage parlor piece there, she has to have this piece changed because that is a component of her business.
Let me, let me, let me try, let me try a different way.
Okay.
I'm not talking about a place where people are giving massages. I'm talking about a place that is an adult entertainment spot that is called a massage parlor. Right, there are, there are, there are massage parlors on Fulton Industrial Boulevard that don't do facial scrubs. And what I'm asking is, are both of those establishments listed under massage parlor in our zoning code? Because what it sounds to me like is that earlier in our work session, we were talking about like uses and limiting like uses, and we were talking about the zoning moratoriums, and we were talking about definitions and the way things are defined in our zoning ordinance, and what is and isn't there, and how we were adding definitions. This seems to me to be a definition problem.
Okay, so I'm going to say that if this item is deferred, I'd like to come back and see if that answers at this time. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Jackson, I'll, I'll let it take a moment.
I move to hold until August twenty-second.
Second, party moved the second, in discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously, that is first.
The next item is council approval of M nineteen dash zero zero one for modica, modification of two hundred six Z dash zero zero four two S F C, the bluff at Camp Creek, public hearing.
Okay, so these two items have had some recent changes that were sent to our office on today.
Are we hearing you together?
Yes, please, I'm sorry, sir, I had to take the two items together, if I may. These items have had some recent changes sent to our office today. And out of respect to receive and have time to consider that staff is not confirming their recommendations today and asking for a deferral on these two items.
Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Do it all, anyone here about the bluff at Camp Creek, for or against? Hold on. For or against?
Against.
Stand there.
Good evening, Michelle Battle, Battle Law, you're representing the applicant. I will not go into kind of a full diatribe about what we went over the last two times with regards to this application. But what we do know is that this particular property and project off of Button Road near the intersection of Buttoner and Camp Creek is currently in the process of, of, of clearing and grubbing with regards to the development of the project that's currently allowed under the existing zoning conditions. There are up to two hundred and fifty-five homes that can be built on this particular subdivision, and the applicant is certainly prepared to move forward with developing as currently zoned. However, we came before you all because we were seeking to, in our opinion, develop a better product. We wanted to build bigger homes as opposed to smaller homes on bigger lots. We also wanted to address some of the front yard issues because the way that the prior developer had laid out the subdivision was going to cause issues in the rear yard and significantly reduce the usable rear yard for families. And so we wanted to be able to push the homes up further so that we would be able to also do the stagger at a twenty and twenty-five foot front setback. We had a community meeting, it was very well attended, finally, we had one that was very well attended. And we know that we received a lot of comments from the community. With that said, it's my understanding that Councilmember Gump has some conditions that she's provided to staff. We've had an opportunity to review those, and with the exception of two other conditions, I think that we are fine and would certainly have preferred to be able to move forward today with regards to the application. I certainly understand staff's position that they have just now gotten these conditions, but for good or for bad, I've been in many a, a situation where councilmembers raise conditions at the last second while I'm standing at the podium, and we just have to work our way through them. The conditions, I assume, would be read by Councilmember Gump. And with regards to two of them, one being the requirement for a three-sided brick home, we would like to request whether or not that can be done on those units, any unit that has sides that are facing a public right-of-way would be three-sided brick, but it would not be every unit within the subdivision. The reason for that is it really cuts down on people's ability to have preference with regards to their home. We are comfortable with the front to sides being brick and stone at seventy-five percent with accents at the types of materials that you had listed there. But to require a home to be three-sided brick is really along with the fact that we are actually looking and willing to even condition it on being a gated community as we had indicated, that that pushes that price point up. Because you have to remember that these homeowners, by having a gated community, are also going to be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of all the roads and that gate within that community. So you're pushing the price point up so high that you're pushing out of the market. And so with that, we would request some modification of that particular requirement. And also, it is fairly typical to have vinyl on some of the cornices and things of that nature. We're not trying to have a vinyl-sided building, but there are certain aspects of it, so we want to just make sure that that was not of issue. With that being said, we would certainly prefer to be able to address this here tonight. And at the same time, if it were to be deferred, we would ask that it not be deferred more than to the first meeting in August. I had challenges being here tonight, but I managed to make it all work out so that I was able to get here. We believe that this can be worked out within the next couple of weeks. And we would ask if that was, if it was deferred to that first meeting.
Thank you, that's four. Hearing none, again?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's John Prince, and I didn't get an opportunity earlier. Now I'm talking about the other side of the button. Same argument, infrastructure, bridge. For those of you who are in my age range, and I'm a baby boomer, we have problems with our bodies, much like our community has problems. Flow, the ever-flow of blood, in our case, the ever-flow of traffic going along Button Road. When they get ready to work on that bridge at Button and shut it down, Burke Road and Fairland Road will not be able to accommodate the growth that you all are proposing right now. What's going to happen to us is you will need to leave like we live up off of Jimmy Carter Boulevard. I live in District Two, I live in the Wellesley community, we have three hundred homes. The amount or the volume of homes that are being proposed for the bluff, I have no problems with that. I really don't, if infrastructure is in place to accommodate that. Now, we fought long and hard, I was part of the land use committee when we were trying to become a city. They were proposing those homes years ago before we said, yes, we will become a city. It was approved by Fulton County for that to happen, and then the market dropped out. With the idea that they were going to work on Button Road, redo that bridge to accommodate all that additional traffic. Right now, again, we're not prepared for that growth that fast in our community. It's coming, y'all, I heard what was being said, I get it, I'm not opposed to the growth, but let's control it. I've gotten bigger as I've gotten older. My doctor says, hey, you need to lose weight. What I'm saying to you all, let's control our growth, let's control our weight. They're talking about big homes, I hate it. That price point going up, I ain't got a problem with a four hundred thousand dollar home. It's not my home, but people, you build it and they will come. You put the nice roads in there, they will come. So, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you so much. All right.
Greetings, uh, to the distinguished mayor, city council, staff, and neighbors. Uh, my name is Kimberly King, I live in, uh, District Two. I am here tonight to speak in opposition of modification request M one-nine dash zero zero one, also known as the bluff at Camp Creek. On July ninth, Councilwoman Gums worked with the owner and developers to, uh, provide a community presentation. I would like to formally thank her for making sure that the developers always come to our community and let us know about these prospective projects and other plans. The room was packed, and my fellow residents were ready to learn. Unfortunately, and this is my opinion, the attorney was not prepared. In my opinion, we were made to feel as if the attorney that we just heard from was doing us a favor, quite frankly, based on the tone of the responses provided, uh, especially she repeated numerous times to us that the original zoning had been approved by Fulton County, and she was only there because of the modification request. So, whereas a lot of us had rushed to get there that day for work, she really made us feel like it was like she was doing us a favor, and it was, it was a little insulting and a little condescending, but I digress. Beyond not providing sufficient materials at the meeting, most of us had the shared materials, they were not able to be reviewed, she was unable to answer many of the community's questions, all the questions were posed in a very respectful manner. She did promise to provide answers, and as I mentioned again, the meeting was on July ninth, we received the answers this morning, I believe around ten-thirty. I can only speak for myself, but I have a pretty demanding career that I enjoy, so I wasn't able to take time out of my workday to review the, uh, answers to the questions. So, receiving responses this morning with a vote scheduled for this evening does not provide sufficient time for the community, the community to discuss, and I believe we are, we are owed an opportunity to discuss our concerns. Further, upon review of the answers, it became even more clear to me that the owner slash developer did not seem to have a vested interest in the community's long-term well-being. If it is deemed, and I guess based on what the staff said today, this may not, this may be moot, but if it were deemed imperative that a vote be done today, I'd humbly ask that you vote no. If a vote may be delayed or deferred, that will be the preference, and I would also ask, uh, Councilwoman Gums and other members that they be required to set up a minimum of at least five, uh, could, five community forums, because I think there are things that we want to discuss, understand the conditions, and understand how we are ultimately going to be impacted, not just in the short term, but for the long term, because bottom line, we live here, we love it and we live here, and we want it to continue to grow in a positive manner. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Good evening, my name is Bruce Moody, and I reside at forty-six twenty at Jones Road, I'm here representing Clintonville, and I'm also hoping that you will deny this modification, and I want to speak to why I think it should be denied. I did not attend that meeting because I had prior commitment that evening, however, I've spoken to many people who did attend that meeting, and what the young lady has said prior to my coming up here, I concur immediately with everything she has said, because that is what I heard also. Uh, Mr. Thor Mitchell is a member of our group, is not here, but I discussed this with him, and one of the problems what he had with it, not being there myself, is that it only had one entrance and exit coming in, and it was not large enough for a school bus to come in and make a turnaround, which would make it impossible for it to go in and pick the kids up and bring them out, which would mean it would necessitate all of the children coming out and going out on Butler Road and meeting the bus. When we talk about traffic and chaos, that would contribute to the traffic and chaos that we already have. While I'm up here, I'd like to mention one other thing, I've heard several people come up and they spoke about infrastructure, and I think it's something that needs to be spoken publicly about. Prior to us becoming a city, we worked with Fulton County, and one of the problems we had with Fulton County when, between the division of the north and the south, is that the north always had impact fees. These impact fees were charged to every developer who came in, in order to make up for the impact they had on the community as far as infrastructure, and I keep hearing people talk about the infrastructure that we don't have, yet no one has come forward and said, hey, we need impact fees on all of the developers and come here. This should not be a free ride for a developer to come here, make their profits, and then leave, and then we have to decide on the bill. It's up to us. We have the best place to develop in this whole entire area, there's no place else to do, to develop. So why should we allow developers to come in and give us what they want to give us, instead of what we want them to give us? That's, that's ridiculous. We're a new city, let's act like a new city that wants its citizens to have something decent. We don't get decency when developers come in and just throw something up on a board and say, this is what I'm going to give you. They give us what we want, not what they want to give us, and it's time that everybody here understands that the citizens want quality, not quantity, quality, every building they come, we shouldn't even be discussing vinyl, vinyl was thrown out a long time ago. When you look at all of the slums that they was actually on fire, it was from one building to another. So we don't want to see vinyl, we're not going to discuss vinyl. That was discussed a long time ago, we have our own overlays, let's adhere to those overlays until the city council and the citizens here come up with a better idea. So I'm hoping that you're hearing this, and that you're listening to this, and we start talking about our impact fees, and hopefully, our developers are accountable. Thank you very much for listening.
I'm going to come back with one more thing, now we have one note to make, that traffic
study that they are, that they are using is flawed. It, it basically takes into account that bridge on Butler being wide, and we all know the mess that we're going through with Fulton County, I hope y'all deal with some of that, I, I get, so my thing is, how do we allow builders to come in, with two hundred and fifty, so let's think about that, that's probably two cars per home, so an additional five hundred cars rolling on the button, and we, they already got one entrance to get in and out of there, so pause on that for a second, but then, they're going to use a bridge that, that, that bridge is probably going to take us four to five years, and that's, that's hoping that we get, Fulton County can release everything within the next, uh, I would say, twelve, eighteen months, so, that's all I got.
Okay, moving on further, I, I'm closed with the, uh, public hearing. That's with the, uh, with the, go ahead.
Is there a time for a rebuttal?
I'm sorry, you had some rebuttal. You had some rebuttal.
I'm sorry.
You had a rebuttal?
Yes, sir, I was trying to deal with the issue there.
Put the rebuttal, then we'll stack up.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Um, with regards to, um, the comments from the community, um, you know, this is a challenging site, there's no question about that, this is a project that was approved back in two thousand and six for two hundred and fifty-five. Um, the zoning, um, you know, the frustration I'm thinking part is because the county, the city has inherited something that from the city's perspective, you all didn't approve. So you're, you're saddled here with an application that technically, um, the owner of the property, um, if they had not needed or had a desire to increase the size of these lots, and to address the issues with the rear yards and move these lots up, I, I can't, I, I'm not lying when I'm saying, then they wouldn't have come through this process, they would have simply gone through, submitted their, um, uh, permits for, um, their, uh, their, um, platting, uh, and, and gotten their land development permit, and they would have built the homes and built in the subdivision. Why we are here is because we needed the opportunity and wanted the opportunity, instead of building, um, lots between six thousand and seven thousand square feet, we didn't want to build any of those small lots, because there were restrictions on how many lots of a certain type you could build. So we wanted to build bigger lots. Additionally, we wanted to be able to move the homes up some, so that, um, the stagger that had been required, um, between, um, the, the current setback at thirty-five, I think it's sorry, at twenty-five, would have meant that the stagger would have been twenty-five and thirty. We wanted the stagger to be twenty feet and twenty-five feet, in terms of moving, um, the front yard setback up. So we had a couple of little tweaks, from our perspective, that we wanted to address. We also wanted to address the fact that with regards to the amenity package, um, the prior developer had all of the amenities over the top of gas lines, we didn't want to do that, we said, we don't want to endanger, um, the folks in the neighborhood, we want to relocate, um, those amenity areas, and so, those are the types of things that we were trying to address, um, by bringing this application. I, I, I don't, I'm not trying to be disrespectful or any of the things that have been, um, stated, but I'm just trying to state the facts as I know them, because that is what my responsibility is, I can't change that. So, you know, we're here today, um, at the last meeting, you all asked us to go back and get a traffic study. We went and got that traffic study, we turned that into staff, and the traffic study addressed the concerns, um, some of the concerns, I mean, it wasn't, um, one of those situations where it said, oh, nothing has to be done, what it said is that the improvements that are coming with the bridge and the improvements at Butler and, um, Butler and Camp Creek, um, will result in the traffic being handled, um, at the time that the subdivision is completed. Well, I can tell you that it will take in excess of a year to complete the infrastructure for phase one, this is a two-phase project, so the first phase of the project, which is a little over, um, a hundred units, um, that phase of the project would take roughly about three years to be completed, and phase two would be another roughly three years to be completed. So, we're not talking about dumping two hundred and fifty-five homes immediately on a community, it is going to take time, and our understanding is that the improvements for the right-of-way improvements would be completed before we would start seeing, uh, a number of these homes being built, although, Councilmember Gumps did say that there has been some issue, I guess, with Fulton County about when they're actually going to start, um, those improvements, but it was our understanding it would be sometime within the next, um, a year to eighteen months, is what we were making the assumption of. So, with that being said, um, we certainly, uh, have a desire to do a quality, um, product within this community, we're willing to work, um, with Councilmember Gums to address the issues that have been raised, and at the same time, we have to think practically. Truth of the matter is, we're behind schedule, and I know that means nothing to you all, but at the end of the day, we still have a schedule that we have to try and comply with, so we really came here tonight in hopes of having either a yes or a no, with regards to the application, and if it's the board's desire to say no, then we understood that, but we also did not know about the additional conditions, um, I had sent out a couple of conditions, yes, um, and we had said that we had been looking at doing a gated community in order to address some of the issues that had been raised, because we want this to be a quality product, but that also means that there are price points that get impacted, because now, those homeowners are going to have assessments that will have to be, um, placed so that they can make the repairs and things to the roads that will be now private roads instead of public roads within the, uh, within the complex. So the other things that you were adding on adds some additional cost, so we needed to be able to assess that, but with a quick assessment, we said everything we can work with, except we had some issues with, um, the front-to-sides and wanted to have a little bit more flexibility there.
Okay.
So, that's where we are today, um, and again, if this is going to be deferred, we would ask that it be to the first meeting in August, to give us an opportunity to meet and address, um, the ten conditions that you have proposed, um, and, you know, beyond that, I guess, you know, we'll just see what happens.
Thank you. I'm closed with the public hearing, uh, Councilwoman Gums.
So, um, Ms. Reed.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we not have impact fees? I thought we had a resolution or something that we, this was held.
So that is something that staff is working with the attorney on now, to, to have, so that is something that, yes, that we are working on.
Okay, so I would suggest that we try to bring that back as soon as possible, um, so, um, a few things. So, my, my, my big concern right now, of course, we cannot defer it to the first meeting, it will have to be to the twenty-seventh, because that is when our zoning hearings are held, so, um, that's the first thing, but again, um, I don't know if I'm willing to budge on a three-sided brick, um, maybe two, I, I can talk it over with staff, but, um, all the things that I said to you and the conditions that we can talk about, but as of right now, I don't know if you need to look at another entrance coming onto Butler, um, because I have heard a lot of the concerns from the thirty or so residents that live in.
Camp Creek Village.
Camp Creek Village, so that has, and I think they're present today, um, but again, there are some things that we need to work out, and based on the information that I received from the staff, they don't feel comfortable granting an approval today. So I will go ahead and, uh, grant the deferral, but it will be for August the twenty-seventh. Um, what I would like to see is, um, some way that we can also meet, and then another, possibly a community meeting, I know they've already met their standards of community meetings, but just as a good faith, maybe going back to the community, um, and sharing what we have decided upon. So I make my motion to defer this until August the twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen.
I can move the second discussion?
Yes.
I, I just wanted to, I just wanted to, to make a point that, um, when I came on council on impact fees, it was very, very important, because I know how important they are, and so, um, but I didn't work fast enough to get my legislation passed, so I wouldn't be working, but it did pass in October of last year, and it's been in a holding pattern, and the reason being is by law, we're supposed to have a committee that is supposed to give us a recommendation, and as you know, I keep asking about it, and the last correspondence I got about it was that, um, that the community zoning board would have to, would have to be trained in order to, um, to come up with, uh, some advice. But I think that the planning commission is the body that should be doing it, and not the community zoning board, but irregardless of that, whatever it is, it needs to happen yesterday, so we can get from point A to point B, because it has taken.
Pristine, yes, ma'am, so if I can make a, um, point to that, the actual ordinance identifies, I can experience that board has to have, so, um, looking at the boards during the time we were first considering, um, we identified that the CBA, the zoning board of appeals, are the individuals who have the experience in construction and real estate and so forth. So it was based on what the, um, the code required in regards to experience, so I understand the preference between one over the other, but the code identified what background experience the individual on the board should have.
So, so what is the deadline for the end of July?
So, um, I need to speak with the city attorney, because she and I are working on that project together, um, I'd rather talk with her and then give you a deadline, um, by first thing, she and I should talk today. Yes, ma'am.
So, the code that you referenced, are you talking about the code that we adopted in Fulton County, correct, or are you talking about some state code?
No, I'm talking about the impact fee, um, code that the city adopted.
Okay, so, um, if it is prohibiting you from, um, moving forward based on the code of what we're saying are requirements, we're the legislators, do you recommend that we relax some of the requirements?
No, I'm not saying it's prohibiting, I just need to confirm that in fact, those individuals who are on that particular board have the experience that is identified in the code, I would not recommend an amendment at this time, it'd be confirmation at this time.
Okay, and then I would like to say, um, I commend my colleagues for, um, making sure that these developers meet with the community and work with the community, um, because at the end of the day, once construction goes up, it's not going to go away, it impacts all of our quality of lives, I mean, I'm very continuous to District Two, so, um, things that happen in District Two does impact District Three as well, and so District Three, there is a current moratorium on District Three, and now you see why, I'm determined to make sure that we address the zoning code and rewrite, and so, when I lift that moratorium, which is going to be soon, we're going to be faced with some of these same issues, so I encourage you all to come to these zoning rewrite meetings, um, that we're having, give your input, so that we will not be faced with some of these same challenges.
Mr. Collegium, would you like to take a look?
Um, so I'm, I'm going to, to follow that, you just said that the, one of the things that I have proposed in this board, that's not in our moratorium, was the notice of mangistures, and I know that you and I, um, Ms. Reed, have talked about that, but just to be clear, what the, what the attorney has suggested, had she not applied for areas, they could have just started building.
That's what they are.
And, and that's actually happened on a national, there are two subdivisions that I just walked by, and they just started building, and they're, we're current, they're And they're, we're current, they're not currently required to notify the community unless they are applying for a variance. So, I know that's one of the things that we're going to look at in our zoning rewrite. Um, the impact fees, is that a part of the zoning code, or is that something that is part of the zoning rewrite, or is it entirely distinct?
So, yes, the development regulations are subset of the zoning laws.
And so, the consultant is looking through that along with everything.
Correct.
Because I'm, I'm assuming that we won't be able to retroactively apply impact fees or change that for this particular.
That's right.
And then my, my last question is, and I'm just asking as information from the attorney representing the developer, but I thought that there was a second entrance in the second, in the second phase? Is there not a second entrance that's going to go through some other community? Just saying.
Yes.
Can we, can I hear from, is that possible to hear from the attorney about this three entrance?
She says it's not. Okay, well, I guess we'll talk about it next time. Okay?
Yeah, very important question.
So, one more question. These community meetings, um, can we make sure, because I've heard of developers, um, requesting residents to go outside of the territory where they're, uh, uh, having, uh, new development? Can we request in the new, uh, code or in the update of the code that these community meetings be within three to five miles of where the new development is?
So, that will be administrative, that is kind of code. That's something that, um, we have already in our policies that we've already amended. So, if you see the application, you'll see, I believe it was Councilwoman Gumps that brought it to our attention some time back, and then that is the requirement that they have it within their district or within a quarter, uh, what's that, quarter mile side of the district.
Okay, so I remind you, I have a moratorium, so I can see any applications, but thank you for knowing that.
Okay. Okay, uh, there's a motion on the floor. Let's vote.
I'll close. I should. I close.
All those in favor?
I'm in the for.
The for. That passed.
So, does both by itself?
For both by itself.
Yes.
Excuse me, you need to take our vote, um, each item separately for the rest.
Okay, well, will you call the next item? Do you want to take a vote?
The next item is M nineteen dash zero zero two for modification of two thousand and two Z dash zero zero one two, Camp Creek Village, Phase One.
Let's go.
I would like to make, um, uh, I guess, approve the deferral till August twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen. So, move discussion. I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that I know that some of the things that we're putting out.
Mike.
I know some of the things that I am requesting, um, may seem a little bit too much, but the developers need to know that they cannot come into our community and just give us anything. And I can't just, you know, this was approved, um, before we became a city, but this is our time to at least weigh in and try to get the things that we need and quality that we deserve. So, I don't want you to think that I'm not fighting for you, but that is what I'm doing. I'm trying to get quality in our city. So, um, with that being said, um, I'll, for vote? Oh, sorry.
Okay, uh, we have motion for all those in favor. That passed. Madam Burke.
Next item is our public comments. Speakers, can you please, public comments? Speaker can, speakers can complete a public room. Speakers will be granted a total of two minutes each, and public comments will not exceed thirty minutes. Speakers will not be allowed to yield or donate that time to other speakers. Speakers may must identify themselves and their address in prior to picking. Speakers may only address the presiding officer, shall observe all rules of court. No debate, disrespect, or obscenities shall be tolerated. The presiding officer shall rule any such individual out of order that fails to comply with the full law. As I call your name, please step up to the podium. Michael Venable, Andre Dancy, James Reese, and brother Anthony Muhammad.
All right, Michael Venable with District Six. My issue is to deal with Robbins with item number nineteen. Compensation here that we're looking at, this is beyond reason. That brings more than double the salary at one time. This is way out of range with the other cities comparable in size. Sandy Springs, eighteen, Savannah, fourteen-five, Marietta, eighteen-nine, and a variety of others. We keep talking about a living wage. This is a part-time position. That doesn't count for that. It doesn't matter what you're doing. If I get a ticket, plane, a hundred dollars to go to New York, and it takes me four hours, and another one takes nine hours, it's still the same price. Number two, this borders on fraud. You are required by law to live in the district to which you represent. By having someone help pay your living expenses, that is fraudulent or borders on fraud. It's not like this is a state or federal position where you have to go to Washington or Atlanta. That is not. Third, ethically, for you to vote to increase your own salary and call ourselves a city of ethics, that is problematic, especially for Districts Two, Four, and Six, because you will really be voting on that unconditionally. The mayor, that might be okay, because he's not voting, and somebody else did it for them. Another entity such as the state should have put this forward. We're not talking about legal twist. We're talking about proper and ethical procedure, timing. This city is still getting on its feet. We're renting everything we're doing. Public safety and parks need attention. Just like a family parent, this council should take care of its constituents first. We're talking about a military and a fisc. The fisc for this in one year would repair the tennis courts that we're looking at, and we really have to even get a grant for this. I think this, is the salary too low? I agree. To the extent that it's gone here, this is improper.
Good evening. Andre Dancy, I live at three-three-six-seven Saber Run Road, and I'm president of the Homeless Association for Saber Run Community. I'm here tonight to ask for your help in the police response. We have a poor police response in our community. I'm going to talk about two situations. First, we had trespassers in our pool. We had over a hundred people in the pool after eight o'clock. They were trespassing the property. One of my board members went to the pool, about six, seven police officers showed up, and the first thing the police officer asked, what do you want us to do? He said, your job. They stood there while he ordered the kids out of the pool. Now, my board member feels nervous, because kids were getting out of the pool and adults pointing like a gun towards him, while the cops sat there and just stood there while the kids just walked out. What happened? Oh, they came back the next day. So, now our pool is closed because of the damage. It costs our HOA and our fees to pay for that, because we not getting the support that we need for the taxes that we pay. Secondly, the ATV, ATV vehicles, all-terrain vehicles, every day, every day, every day. Up and down Buckington, down Estes, Saber Run Road through my community, we have sent the address of the perpetrators. Nothing has been done. And I'm almost at the point to say, hey, if you want to ride your ATVs and ride your bikes around without a helmet, it's against the law. Come to Saber Land. Finally, I do want to talk about another incident, and that is that I did get a call from the police department. They did call. I was at work. I could not speak to them. He did not leave a name or a number of text media issues, and that was the end of the call. So, I'm asking and I'm pleading for help for the police to do their jobs. Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. My name is James Reese, forty-fourty West Uptown Road. I'm here to express my opposition to a number of items you have scheduled tonight. First, the agenda, the item to increase the pay of the council and mayor. We need to do soft disposition. You knew it was part-time. You knew exactly what you were doing in terms of, uh, entail in terms of the pay that you're getting. You voted on May first, two thousand and seventeen to accept it, and you accepted the charter. You have been given legislative aids as a request. Is that not enough? Charter mischaracterized the term salary. The correct term should be stipend, because I'm guessing none of you submit a timesheet on a bi-weekly basis. Seeking a hundred and forty-six percent increase in pay is misguided in that the charter written for the city of South Fulton, not equal to all the charters ever written, but some never passed the state legislature, not legislature. None of them ever, um, went above seventeen-five in terms of pay for the, uh, council. Further, if this council takes this action today, and tonight, excuse me, it will be in violation of OCG thirty-six, thirty-five, four of the state constitution related to home rule. And what I mean by that, elective municipal authority compensation, notice should have been placed in a legal organ like newspaper or general circulation, uh, in this county for three consecutive weeks preceding this action. So, this should have happened back early July, early June in the paper. That has not happened. Other than that, for your information, give us some perspective on why this is not a good idea at this time. Each point generates more than four thousand dollars per capita on their, uh, citizens. College Park generates ten thousand dollars per capita. The city of South Fulton, only seven hundred and twenty dollars per capita, based on our joint fund budget, revenue, uh, revenue. I will, I will send you an email on the rest. Thank you.
I am President Donald Muhammad. I am that I am a spirit, a soul for man. I am that man that represent the real, represent truth, and not a religious man. I don't believe in a book that don't have one person born from a woman. Scriptures don't run out of church. I come here to talk about Butner Road. Butner Road, I have to talk with Atlanta. And I live on the border line of Taylor Road and Butner, and the city of Atlanta and South Fulton and New City. Butner Road was set in two thousand and sixteen by Mr. Reed, that they were going to pay you. Two thousand and eighteen, the city council have decided they're going, have to decide a little longer that you pay. So, I come to you, mister. Mayor, can we mention this before? Butner Road had been paid in nineteen ninety-two. Since then, there have been no service there. Butner Road and county line have a bus stop. You have people that get off the bus and have to walk. Mr. Paul, as I told you, down the side of the street, all the people coming from Camp Creek on the other side of Butner Road, don't even have the decency to want to watch the people and give them free ride. I ask your people, Mr. Knight, to cut the overgrowth off Butner Road. So, I'm saying, since we got all this traffic coming from Camp Creek and Butner Road going southeast, let's ask for what did or not. Let's ask for intention did, because we don't live with HOAs. We don't live in a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house, but we have people that assist each and two, having justice in their community, Mr. Paul. And I'm asking this, Mr. Elton, we said when you were before, as my county commissioners, we need to help service and famine in our area as well. My hotel.
Thank you.
That is council comment. Next item on the agenda is to approve of consent agendas, item ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen, and fifte, I'm sorry, thirteen and fifteen.
I'll let Jane vote.
I move to a favor of consent agenda, item ten, eleven, twelve. Thirteen and fifteen. Thirteen and fifteen.
So moved. So moved. I can move the second. In discussion. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Madam Burke.
Next item, a previous agenda item, item number seventeen, council approval of resolution of census task force.
Um, council, I ask that we approve this resolution. Ms. Gump, I'm not Ms. Gump, councilmember here, y'all have questions, um, concerning this, and I think I answered my question. Um, what we want to do is go ahead and give us a pool. We do have activities, uh, that I've, we've been working with. The committee has already performed, but we want to give everybody on this council an opportunity to appoint someone from their district to help lead, uh, activities, uh, on the census task force, uh, as we plan out activities for the remainder of fiscal nineteen and start planning out activities for fiscal twenty-twenty.
I think that, uh, this is very, very important, and for all of y'all out here listening, census is important for us, because it means dollars. And we need to make sure that each and every person is, is counted, and we need your support and your help to join us as volunteers, uh, to help us do this. Because we don't want to leave any money on the table when it comes to, uh, federal government. So, uh, my plea to you is to make, is to come in and assist wherever you can. Uh, we are open arms for you, and we wait to get this job done.
I move that we approve resolution for census task force.
Second.
Probably move the second. In discussion? Hang on. All those in favor? All those in favor? Census task force discussion. That passes unanimously. Madam Burke.
Next item, it's council second reading and approval of amending ordinance title eight, traffic and vehicles.
I move that we approve ordinance amending title eight, traffic and vehicles.
There's second.
Second.
Probably move the second. In discussion? All those in favor? That passes unanimously.
Next item, council second reading and approval of amending ordinance two point fourteen, compensation and expenses for council.
I move that we approve this ordinance to home board in conversation with the council.
Can I, can I clarify on that motion? Can you say approved for first adoption? And I'd like to clarify that as part of the state process that you have to go through, your approval tonight will not implement this action. It still has to come back for ordinance.
Yeah, I, I was going to ask, we got a discussion for you to clarify some of the things that we heard.
Yeah, that's what I was going to do on this question.
Based on OCGA, you think it'd be that valuable? Ms. Williams.
Mark second.
We're in discussion. We're in discussion, Ms. Williams.
Ms., um, Attorney Walker, I would like for you, if possible, can you clarify, there were some, um, remarks made about this council doing something illegal, and we're in violation of state law, and we're in violation of, uh, home rules. Can you clarify some of the comments that were made for, uh, to the public? Uh, is this in any way a violation of home rules? Is this council in any way a violation of state law? And?
Well, I did hear concerns about, um, the process being brought by the council, and the state legislature has created provisions under the state, under the state code where this process is council-led. So, that is the state process that the Georgia, the General Assembly has declared will dictate the council salary. Now, can, um, the General Assembly do the, do this themselves? Yes, but do you, you, you don't frequently see the General Assembly getting that involved in the day-to-day details of councils, um, almost exclusively, probably ninety-five to ninety-nine percent. I've actually, in my practice, have never seen, um, any of the cities that we represent, the General Assembly facilitating this process, and that is because there is a state statute that prescribes the process to the local government, and that's the state statute that the, the mayor and council are following through, through this process. Um, I also heard concerns about the advertisement, about publication for three weeks, and you were required, the mayor and council are required to advertise this before they take action that puts this change into effect, and with what they are doing tonight, they are not putting this change into effect. They will, however, attempt to put this change into effect on August thirteenth, and we have set and made arrangements for advertisements to run this week, next week, and the week after that, and then the week after that, after those three consecutive weeks of advertisements, notifying the public of what's going on, then the council will be, will be presented with this option for final. then the council will be, will be presented with this option for final adoption.
Any further discussion?
Do they have a motion?
Yes. Okay, properly moved.
Yes. And this is my second read.
Second read. All right, Madam Burke? Oh, we have a motion.
You have your vote.
The ordinance.
It's your second read of the vote, doesn't move.
This is the second read?
Yes.
Yeah, it is the second read.
Council's second read.
Okay, let's do that. Okay, we have a motion for a second. All those in favor? One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four. Okay. All right. Madam Burke? We also understand what we need in anything is knowing that with that vote, it does come back.
Yeah, that vote allows it to continue its course. But the vote today will not put this legislation into effect. It will not go into effect until you have a final adoption that's going to the thirty.
Okay.
You need to call those opposed.
Let's poll it. Those who said, those who said affirm.
It don't matter, I would say I voted.
He said.
Okay, you got him. Okay, those. Those who opposed. With Gil Yard. With Gil Yard and, uh.
Thank you.
All right. Next?
Next item is council second reading and approval to a, of amended ordinance twenty-eighteen oh four-seven, title five, planning and zoning.
Go ahead.
Second reading and approval of amended ordinance twenty-eighteen oh four-seven, title five, planning and zoning, appendix C of city code ordinance, adding definitions, limitations of land uses, notice of land disturbance, and other lawful purposes.
Yes. So we're actually, we're actually going to table this? I, I, one, I want to table it, but two, we actually have to table it. Because the zoning ordinance stipulations before we can approve it, it would have to go through the planning commission, and we have to have a public hearing by it. So it actually shouldn't be on the table at all. So my motion is to table it.
Do you take a motion?
I'll take it. To which?
May I table it indefinitely?
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
Properly moved the second. Any, any discussion? All those in favor? That passes. Madam Burke?
The next i- the next item is number fourteen. Council approval of a resolution for moratorium, ban usage, uses. No, this is, this is pulled, was pulled from the consent agenda, item number fourteen.
But this is the one that he just actually, um.
He pulled from the consent agenda?
No, this was discussed during work session.
This is the moratorium.
I so moved, so moved, I mean, I moved to approve the moratorium ban uses.
Properly moved the second. Properly the second, let me go through my thing. Properly moved the second, in discussion?
Yes, I want, I want formless market.
I was, I was cut off, I was about to say.
Councilman Ward, can you speak to your question?
Sure.
We were moving a little bit too fast when I was cut off. I would like to restate my motion, if possible. I want to approve that we ban uses with the amendments that we discussed. We want to remove farmers market. And we want to, um, there's one more minute, we just. Add extended space to the ban.
Extended stay hotel?
Extended stay hotel, yes. Did I cover everything? Did I cover everything, colleagues? Okay.
Madam, I think, Madam, Madam tried to key amend the original motion by doing an hourly vote. But she's amended the original, original motion.
Correct.
All right. Okay? Any further discussion on the, on the motion and the movement? All those in favor? All those in favor? That passes. Next?
Item number sixteen, council approval of a change order to allow management ever, advisory group international to conduct an organizational staffing analysis in the amount of seventy-eight, seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
I'll accept the motion.
So. I move that we approve, uh, it was, we took it off. Is that, why did we take this off of the? Okay, so we asked them. Okay, so we're gonna, we asked that we hold this because they wanted additional quotes.
So that should be it?
I'll take the motion that we hold it until we get additional quotes.
Second.
Properly moved the second discussion. Go ahead.
For clarity, now what we're saying is, is move forward with the procurement process to include their, there, include them in the procurement process, but also receive additional feedback from other vendors. Correct? Through procurement, okay.
Okay, here you go, the discussion, all in favor? All in favor? That passes with the exception of one, Ms. Gil Yard. One name, Ms. Gil Yard, okay?
Next item, number twenty-one, council approve of resolution adopting compensation and classification study.
I make a motion to approve the resolution for adopting and compensation classification study for the city of South Fulton. So moved.
Properly moved the second, in discussion? Hearing none, all those, yes, sir.
Was there question or conversation about council salary?
No.
No. All right.
Wait, are you accepting it as presented, or are you?
No, it's staff recommendations.
Yeah, I think it's different.
Yeah, it's staff recommendations.
With staff recommendations.
Right. All right, hearing that, all those in favor? That passes unanimously, Madam Burke?
Next item is council first reading to amend the administration ordinance twenty-seventeen dash oh oh-three.
That's just the first read, the council's one again.
This was council member Raul.
There, there are, there is a comment on there that we probably should have on the record as presented. Okay, so when you, if the council would look at page four fifty-one in your binder for this ordinance, and I'll defer for, to additional comments for the chief financial officer, but under four, there is language that I think just needs to be altered slightly. It lists the following offices are part of the finance department, and it lists human resources and information technology. Those are actually departments. And the reason why I wanted to just point that out to make it departments is because, you know, there, in our compensation study, it defines the difference between departments and offices and things of that nature. And there's compensation associated with it. So I would just ask that you add some type of caveat, like department and offices, to make sure that they're covered.
I think the best solution may be for me to just sit down with the city manager versus you having to do anything today. And for your next read, I'll confirm, and then we'll give a template to go back.
Sure. Councilwoman Raul wanted to see if you make a change.
I'll give this, this, Ms. Gump, then it's Gil, Ms. Jackson.
So, um.
I thought you were there already, I'm sorry. But I'll get you.
You want me to?
Go ahead, I thought I didn't clear you out.
So, um, so that was one of my concerns, Mr. Gump. So you have covered that, because HR and IT are their own department. But I believe in section one dash three oh three, just from my education, is asking for expenses within thirty days. Should, is that too long, or is it?
Well, I, I would refer to, to finance on that, but I think they usually shore up their, their reports within about thirty days. I, I mean. Oh, they do within, oh, exactly, within seven days.
So it's been, I discussed with the Raul, is she's going to make those changes. After travel, you get back, you're supposed to give the receipts within seven days. Because one month will be too late, it will be in the following, uh, billing of the credit card. And there was also ninety days, if he, if that's the word, that means it will be, it will be too late, ninety days, or even one month, a one month. So if it's within seven days, you have to provide the receipts.
Okay, so that is going to be updated.
It will be updated, I think, if this was of, for HR and the IT as part of finance, they are in. They have bank accounts, so she understood that my questions will be there.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cleane, let Ms. Jackson go, I missed you.
Uh, I didn't hear. I know this is gonna change, but when I was trying to do a little research together, I did not see where business licensing and permits with under economic development and other.
It's coming to finance October, it will be in the budget.
I beg your pardon?
Business license was one of the recommended in the twenty-twenty budget. It's moving from economic development to finance come October one.
Okay, I'm just saying, I, I was trying to do a little research, and a lot of this stuff that's in here, it's all mixed up.
Needs to be. You have recommendations of where it should be. I, I'm certain that the, uh, the council member who wrote the resolution, resolution, along with the city attorney, would be more than welcome to any edits. I know staff has provided some, but.
But I'm just saying legally, so that we won't be challenged. Because economic development, giving our business license, uh, that should come under community development, I think is what I saw.
No, so what they have, I think what the treasurer has stated is that the edit that will be coming forward from Dr. Raul is that those would align with the city treasurer's office, and that, um, that is a budget recommendation coming forward in FY twenty budget, and it's an ordinance adjustment that she'll be making to this document. Does that make sense? So basically, she has your edit already?
Well, let me ask you a question.
Okay.
You all were just asking us for seventy-eight thousand dollars for this per, well, not you all. For this, for this person. So what did he do?
He worked on the pay-in class plan. So his responsibility, and again, I have to defer to the city treasurer's office, this is a HR function and it falls under him. But the focus was to identify the salaries for our current employees and what makes us the most competitive. Mayor and council, legislative aides, staff, part-time, everyone. So they made recommendations on that, as well as some general recommendations on structure.
Okay, so what do we have, the recommendations that he made?
Yes, ma'am, they're in the overall pay-in class plan. I think some of the edits that you're requesting are in here because of that. Yes, ma'am.
That's what I'm saying.
And this way.
We need to have that versus, we don't need, I don't, I, I'm not, it's nothing, no offense, uh, with, uh, Councilwoman Raul, but I don't think she should have been doing this. I think she should have taken the recommendations from the professional that we paid.
I actually think that's what this is. So this is the first read, and some of those recommendations, remember, um, per my letter, we received them about ten days ago. And so they're still incorporating them in here. And so it's going through the process. I think I mentioned one, just to put it on the record, because it didn't make it in, but those others have already been in here. I think that's why the city treasurer mentioned they'll be coming forth in the FY twenty budget, because we've already received them from the consultant. You actually just took action to approve that plan, and now, before your second read, they will be incorporated comprehensively.
I'm trying to, you need to start talking to him.
Oh, so that's what she was asking. I see what, so where you're, am I correct? That what you're asking is this ordinance represents the structure for today. You want it to represent the, any recommendations and anything going forward before it's made final, correct?
That's what we paid for.
And I think you're on the same page, Ms. Mc. Well, no, council member, we receive it, I think you're exactly right.
Stuff from the side. We paid for one thing, and then we're sitting up here reading something else.
In short, hundred percent agree with you, and I remember it's just first read, so some of those edits are in there. I think, secondly, a point is, is that the recommendations that the consultant made are not fully for organizational structure. I think that's why he was asking for additional funding, so that he could focus on organizational structure.
I think he already has.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Mr. Cleane? We're gonna have our second read of this on August the thirteenth. All right, Ms. Gump?
Oh, hi, that's old.
Okay, Ms., uh, Ms. Back, go ahead, just go.
Yeah, so.
Is it me who's?
It's you, Ms. Gump.
I, I just want to go on record, because I, I certainly do think some of this is just elementary. Um, why do we have where council offices going to be in administrative office? I mean, in this, or, this has nothing to do with administration. Where council offices should be in, who get the biggest office and who get the smallest office? This is, this is, this is, I mean, come on, what better than this?
Okay.
Okay, uh, Ms. Gil Yard?
Um, I just want some clarity. So we heard from consultant a couple of hours ago, he did the compensation study in a longer way. He recognized that there were some things that really he thought required additional work. That work was not a part of what he was paid to do under the compensation study that he performed. And in order to do this extra work, that was going to look at our whole organization structure, what it was, what it wasn't, and it was going to cost seventy-eight thousand dollars, because it was not a part of what we hired him to do. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Now, this ordinance has absolutely nothing to do with that at all. He performed a compensation study and looked at how people were paid, and what they were doing, and all of that. And out of that, he looked at, oh, they need these policies and processes and procedures and organizationally, other stuff needs to happen. Is that not true?
He's not willing to make some money.
Is that not true?
I would say that staff has also, and council, all recognize we need to look at the structure of our operations. And I think where you guys recognize is that if you know that the cost, um, under the consultant would be about eighty thousand, and you know exactly what you're paying, I think where you decided to do was look to see if you could get the same or better quality, and maybe a more robust option for less, as well as give him an opportunity to compete with others who are interested. Which is, you know, you, you're overseeing taxpayers' money.
That's not what I asked you. You didn't, you didn't.
Because I can't speak for the consultant.
Because I asked you exactly what he stood up and told us and said, isn't that true? And you added all this other stuff.
Oh, absolutely, because you're not gonna give me the answer for consulting. And he might have to.
All right, okay. Okay? Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
You're ready, yes, sir.
Councilwoman Raul is absent, is it possible we could just table this and let her come? I understand it's the first read, but I guess what I'm saying is, is it possible?
I understand it's the first read, but I guess what I'm saying is, is it possible to even table the first read? Well, I'd like to make a vote, because, like, she may explain, because in her.
Let her speak.
If she's present, she probably can explain some of these things that we have questions about, and then we can go back with our changes, if that's the case. Like, she's not here, this is the first read, and we're gonna make several changes to our ordinance that she might not be in compliance with, I think just out of deference.
So staff, these questions, can you, can you?
Can we table the first read?
Yeah, you can push the first read.
I can make a motion to table it. At least until, uh, August thirteenth, I mean.
Is there a second? Hearing none, let's go back to the second.
Um, I do have a question, ma'am. Uh, is it possible for us to load on it on the first read?
Yeah, it is.
All right.
Okay. All right.
Item twenty-three, Council Approval of a Resolution to Fulton County Development Authorities Seeking Recognition of South Fulton Development Authority.
I wanna, uh, pull it and hold it till the next meeting. Next to me. Wait, 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 I'm getting some, um, okay, I, I, I'll, I'll put it, I'll put it. I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve it.
Second.
Probably move the second.
I like, I would like to ask for a friendly amendment. Can we, can we?
We've already moved it second. Are we in discussion now?
All right.
Any discussion?
Okay, um, so I've already talked to Ms. Gil, Gilyard about this, can we add all the appointed positions?
That's not the one that we're talking about, we're talking about, we're not talking about.
Okay, I withdraw my question.
We still have any discussion?
I would like to, uh, ask the city manager to apply.
Yeah, I, well.
I wouldn't.
Yeah, I think, I think I would. Is it possible for us to, or would you be friendly to having a discussion about this in executive session before you move forward on it and take action? I think it has to do with real estate, I think it has to do with real estate and maybe litigation.
Okay. Is that all we have, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, I have to withdraw my motion, you come back. You withdraw your motion?
Yeah, you can withdraw this conversation to executive session.
I can withdraw the motion, all right?
Yeah, you would need to withdraw the motion and then move.
So whose motion was it?
It's my motion.
Second.
Okay with the second? Who's the second? All right, let's go to the next one.
But I thought you were gonna. So can we do both items?
They say add a man, clerk.
Next item, Council Approval of Resolution for City Manager Performance Evaluation.
Um, I want to, um, to make a amendment to it, rather than it be the city manager's evaluation, I would like to change it from city manager to appointed position.
Okay.
So move.
Uh, can I ask her something? This, this conversation, would it be more appropriate in personnel and regulation?
You just change it.
Just change it.
Okay, I got it. I got it.
It's just that what I talked about is not reflected in the, in the resolution, so that's what I want, I wanna make sure it includes that throughout wherever it needs to be.
I got it, I got it. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. You didn't vote for it, uh?
No.
Okay.
Oh, um, Ms. Ma'am, I would like to ent, I would like to entertain a motion to, uh, go into executive session for real estate, uh, personnel, and litigation.
Are you, are, I'm sorry, are you going into executive session before the?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
A friendly amendment.
Wait, okay, what is that?
That the executive session now exceed nine thirty.
There's a second?
Second. Second.
Uh, hold on a second.
You gonna take over in that?
Yeah, because you just, 'cause you just, uh, you, you, you have, uh, personnel matters that may require, yeah, but that might, if you are, I don't think nine thirty may be sufficient. Huh?
We have to make a motion, we need to amend this one.
I think, I think we need to, 'cause there, how many, how many items are left in the general, we come out of executive session?
City managers and the financials.
So that's what our financials report.
So we have to hear a report from Mr. Dunn and Mr. Aladdin when we come out of executive session, nine thirty minutes.
Can I make a motion?
Go ahead.
So I would like to offer, um, a friendly amendment, I guess that's what you're calling it. Um, is there a way that we can suspend the chief financial officer's monthly report and city manager's report, and then we'll be able to have a little bit more time in executive session?
If we, if, if we suspend him, I'll, I'll humble when it goes to nine thirty-five. I would like, I would like for us to be out of the.
Okay, so now you, you draw that motion.
I'm just saying, I would, that's my, my, my legislative intent is that we are out of this building by now.
So my motion, can I restate my motion? My motion would be that we go into executive session, um, suspending, uh, check the chief financial, um, officer's monthly report and the city manager's monthly report to, I guess, either be put on the website or for viewing, and we will not exceed nine forty-five for executive.
That's her amendment to your motion.
I said it. All right, approved.
Okay. There's a second? Probably move the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, let's go to the executive session. Motion to reconvene, right, Madam Clerk?
I'd like to make a motion to reconvene.
I'll make a motion that we close.
No, make a motion to reconvene in a second?
Second.
Probably move the second, that we convene all in favor. All right, we had, uh, we had two items in executive session, the right, Ms. Clerk?
Yes.
Item number twenty-three.
Yeah.
Item number twenty-three, Approval of Resolution, Fulton County Development Authority to Recognize City of South Fulton Development Authority.
We're holding.
Hold.
You need to make.
Hold, he made a motion to hold, he's second. Probably move the second, any discussion? All in favor? All right, uh, Madam Attorney, help us with this next motion.
Um, so who's giving the motion?
I'll give it.
Wait, 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 she's gonna give it to me, I'm gonna read it. You got it?
You got it, okay. All right. I move to confirm Bonnie Willis as the acting and permanent chief judge, subject to confirmation of her final salary and contract following negotiations with the city manager.
Second. Probably move the second, in discussion. All those in favor? Congratulations, Bonnie Willis. All right.
I move that we adjourn.
Probably move the second, in discussion, all those in favor? I'll see y'all later.